All right, I call for me to order these ready for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body. The city gives Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of the recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The president shall approach the podium, take his name and address from the clerk's record, and our ask the limit remarks in five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall be determined by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city should reserve the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule.
Wilkin.
Here.
Kayler.
Colterman.
Singleton. Stryson. Miller. Tanya.
All right. We have a quorum. First, we have the first five items make up this evening's consent agenda.
Do we approve?
Do the motion and second, is there any further discussion?
Moved by Stryson, second by Worgen.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
Motion carries. Next, we have our public hearings. First public hearing this evening, we have is 7:00 p.m. consideration of an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of Redwood subdivision. Welcome.
Evening. All right, this is a major subdivision for the purpose of creating an access to a city-owned lot to the north of this development. The rail campus has a lot that is currently landlocked with no access from the north because of Workman Boulevard. Effectively, there's no way to maintain the lot, no way to get anything in there should we want to sell the lot. Without access, we cannot sell the lot. Staff worked with the owners on the north side of Redwood, there was three existing lots there. We effectively converted them to two lots, with the middle lot being primarily floodplain and an undevelopable lot. So we took that lot, we split it to both the owner to the east and the owner to the west. The lot to the west had a current electrical easement going through it that was wide enough that we could utilize it as an access easement. So we worked with the owner, they agreed to that. Effectively, that left two larger lots. The gentleman to the east, Mr. Dallas Baker, has mowed and maintained that lot for the most part for the last several years anyway. And then, Mr. Katon was left with a much larger lot to the west, it's a lot easier to develop. There are no current plans for development at this time that I am aware of. Planning commission recommended approval, five votes.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
I'll just also note that we also spoke with Mr. Katon, and we noted that based on the orientation of how they develop that lot on the western side, we may want them to move the access easement ultimately. So I just wanted that in the record, that we may recommend they move that at the time that they permit. It just depends on how you want to orient and how you think the best way to put some sort of structure or house on that lot. But that could be way down the line, so we just wanted it in the record that should that happen a different way than what we anticipate, they can move that access easement to the other end of the lot.
All right, with that, it is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one wishing their comment, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council for any further discussion. Or ask someone to introduce the ordinance. I'll introduce the ordinance. All right. An ordinance to approve the plat entitled Redwood Subdivision, a replat of Lot 1, Twin Oaks Development, third edition, and Lots 1 and 2, Twin Oaks Development, fifth edition. City of Seward, Seward County, Nebraska, as here and after set forth, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2024-3, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with such, to a rule?
Salute.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please register your votes. Please register your votes. We're good? Okay, sorry, wasn't one up yet.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
I thought you were pranking me, all I saw were no lights. One of those nights. Again, this is ordinance number 2024-3. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as rest?
Second.
The motion and the second, is there any further discussion?
Moved by Colterman, second by Worgen.
The question, this is your ordinance number 2024-3, be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
All right, thank you. Item number one on our administrative items, we have presentation and acceptance of Seward Volunteer Fire Department annual report. Chief Kimzie, welcome.
Hi, everybody, I'm Chief Kimzie of the Seward Volunteer Fire Department. I appreciate you guys for supporting the fire department. Greg and Derek's not here, but I appreciate you this year, and Mayor, I appreciate you, thank you. Okay, the annual report, the purpose of the fire department is to protect, to provide fire protection, suppression, rescue, and emergency medical care, transportation for the city of Seward, Nebraska, and the Seward Rural Fire District, promote fire prevention through education and training of the public, provide aid to civil authorities in the case of a natural or a national disaster or emergency of any type, promote safety through education to the public, provide training and equipment necessary for the above tasks to be accomplished, as well as aid the Seward County departments. Total calls for this year is 726. Break that down, fires 104, rescue 572, motor vehicle accidents 46, agency assist 1, other is 1, and public services 2. Membership. Seward Fire Department has 45 members responding to any emergency in and around Seward County. Members maintain the highest level of competency through the training and professional development. The membership meets monthly for department meetings and training sessions. We welcome five new members in '23, Bradley Park, Haley Goodrich, Jaden Volski, Kip Jones, and Gunner Fink. Seven members resigned in '23, four is time commitments, two moved, and one reserved status. The officers, myself, chief, Dan Brown, assistant chief, Landon Dirks, training officer, Taylor Mifflin, assistant training officer, Connie Langwin, rescue captain, Tammy Savala, assistant rescue, supposed to be captain. Company one captain Tyler Dickinson, company two captain Lisa Kimzie, pick and ladder John Singleton, safety officer Kent Amen, President Mark Seward, and Secretary Brian Niebry. Operations. Implement a code of conduct policy to ensure the continued integrity of the department by setting expectations of each member to maintain the highest standards of ethical conduct. Updating and revising standard operating guidelines and bylaws, completed our first year billing for calls and the budget process. Training, through 2023, members trained and prepared to protect the citizens and property of Seward County. Members attend and train on a variety of classes and leadership courses by attending monthly training sessions, mutual aid meetings, storm spotting classes, various trainings outside the department, EMS conference, Les Luker Leadership Conference, and fire school, as well as many others. It's probably a little bit higher, but 2584 hours of training, 21 EMT certified with five new being in 2023, 20 total firefighter ones certified, with eight being new in 2023. The department also gained fire one instructors with Landon Dirks and Taylor Mifflin, which tremendously helps us with the training part through the state. Community. Seward Fire, Seward Volunteer Fire gives back to everyone, to the community through public interactions. Community service events, sporting events, escorts, fire prevention, Fourth of July, education in schools, in collaboration with the local hospital. Response times. Response time based on medical responses only. Time calculated is calculated from two phases of the call. The first time is, is the unit is dispatched to the time the unit was in route. So that's your first one, seven minutes and one second, two seconds round it up. The second is the time we went, second is the time the unit was leaving the station to arriving on scene, three minutes. Please note the times listed above are only figured using the first arriving unit. There are times by the, using the radio communication, a member may be closer to the scene without responding to the fire station. With this consideration, response time can be reduced. ISO, insurance service office. Fire score is a rating that determines how well the fire department can protect your community and home. ISO rating is assigned to the public protection classification on a scale from 1 to 10, one being the best. A good ISO rating brings value to the community in decreasing insurance costs. Seward Fire now has a four, we're very proud of that, thanks to the water department. Data software, response master program to grow and has been beneficial in gathering information and completing data for tracking and reporting, which is beneficial for the ISO rating. Current information gathered are truck maintenance, work orders, monthly truck checkouts, fleet management, hydrant locations, incidents, maps, and has the potential to capture more data in the future that will benefit the operations of Seward Fire. And that's, on the sheet, that's our units. Do you want me to read through those? I might have to borrow some glass.
No, I think we're good there.
Thank you. Mutual aid is currently working toward a bond to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus. The overall project is to standardize and update equipment, and apparatus to have all Seward County departments operating mutually, which I think that's going to help a great deal to have all the departments on the same uniforms, bunker gear, trucks. Trucks is going to differ, but it's going to be the same basic truck, you just add on to it. Building and expansion project. Seward Fire is one of the busiest volunteer fire departments in the state without being paid personnel. So don't forget that part. With the increased demands and foreseeable needs for the increased service, the building and expansion planning project goal is to incorporate living quarters to meet the current and ever-growing population of the city of Seward. The determination of our members made what many would call impossible possible. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Chief Kimzie? We appreciate your willingness to come and talk with the council. We really, this is something that has kind of been on the books for a long time, but we really just haven't done it. And we, and it just is, the fire department is unique in a number of different ways. It's a department, but it's volunteer, so it falls a cut into a separate category. And so, historically, you know, we've been pretty, I guess, hands-off is the right term, but we typically want the fire department to be able to handle its, you know, its situation, its membership. And there's a long history, a lot of its families that have been very dedicated to the fire department. And so, we just wanted to kind of let, give you an opportunity to kind of get kind of the summary of what's going on this last year in particular. But moving forward, just so that you're a little bit more familiar about what they do. So when they come with requests, it's not foreign to the council, like why are they asking for this? Hopefully, it was mentioned. When I first became mayor, we actually had three firefighters on the council, and one was a former chief. So I got an earful of what the needs were at the fire department. And, you know, over time, we have Singleton now as the lone member. And so, we just wanted to make sure we keep an open line of communication with the fire department. So if they need something, they feel like they can have that conversation with us. And if we have concerns or hear something that we know, we can go to them and let them know, and so they can handle it hopefully internally and go from there. So we really appreciate all that your department does, and we appreciate your willingness to share this, your last year here, not your last year with the last,
Well, it could be.
That came out wrong. The last, your last year of,
As a team of all the things you've done.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all again for your support, it's appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As your motion to accept the report.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Colterman, second by Kayler.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
Thank you. Item two, presentation and exceptions of annual library report. Welcome.
Thanks for having me again. You received the annual report in your packet, and I gave you her copy as well as bags of candy. It's not the most important thing. The red ribbon is dark chocolate, the brown ribbon is milk chocolate mocha. So if you want to do any trading or whatever, that's the key to that. Last year, the library celebrated 20 years in our building, and we had a lot of special events. So that's really the highlight of the annual report. We had big name authors and got a lot of people who'd never been in the library to come into the library to listen. And that was a lot of fun for our staff. What are you getting next year? We're not doing this every year. Maybe every five. The numbers that I'm required to report to you are there in my graphs and charts and things. Really, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions from the council? Or comments? I can tell you, we're really appreciative of everything the library does. We get a lot, I get, personally, I get compliments from people that are, you know, visit Seward, and they're surprised that we have such a great library, just because not a lot of communities have such a great library, and they're very, very, you know, they really recognize that as a jewel in this Seward crown. So we just appreciate all that you do and your staff does, and I know we often ask you to do more with less. And I'm sure with coming out of the COVID years, that made it very particularly difficult. And so we just wanted to know how much we do appreciate everything that all of your staff and volunteers have done to make that such an important asset and resource for the community. Greg?
I just also note, the library is also going to pick up a big brunt of the Civic Center closing.
Already have.
Clark, has Clark asked for a key yet?
No comment.
The other thing is, is just the facilities at the library are state-of-the-art. With the renovations that were done in the basement this year, we've essentially converted the basement conference room with its capabilities and infrastructure in there to like our headquarters for construction meetings until we can get out on site and not be tromping through the mud all the time, which hopefully we will. But we've been able to meet with Sampson and do stuff on the wellness center and have all the different architects and stuff involved, and that's part of, part of those renovations that makes that really a nice place to do some of those meetings. So we really appreciate Becky having her facility available to us.
Yes, Rich?
I'd like to add that I have the opportunity to attend many of the library board meetings, and I want to stress the communication that's going on between our library and the other libraries in the area, and they're constantly visiting about things that are working well. And I think that makes it a vibrant, active library for our patrons in Seward. So I think Becky goes above and beyond, and her staff goes above and beyond.
Yeah, we do have a very, I guess, not very unique, either unique or it's not unique. We have a unique structure. I know, when I used to work in the legislature, our committee did, one of the jurisdictions, little-known jurisdiction was libraries. And I remember we had a library bill one time, and one of the testifiers mentioned, "Well, you know, Seward has this hybrid system that we really like," and I had like no idea what they're talking about. I'm like, "Tell me more about the system that we have that you really like." And, you know, historically, there's been, there has, not in Seward necessarily, but in other communities, tension between the library and City Hall and others in the community over essentially control of who makes decisions on, on whether it's books or, or, you know, the access, all these different things that come up. And, you know, the system, and I, you know, I inherited it when I became mayor, so I wasn't really aware of how that developed. But it's definitely something that I know other, others, other libraries and other communities are aware that the way that we sort of blend that relationship so that, you know, it's not like they're rogue, they're not, you know, completely independent to do whatever they want, but we're also not heavy-handed in how, you know, telling them how to manage and what to do. And so there is that kind of give and take, and a lot of it has to do, again, like anything, you have to have the right people with the right personalities who understand the same mission and the same goals, and they're all rolling in the same direction. And I think we've accomplished that. And so I'm very, very proud of our library and how well, you know, everyone gets along. And it really hasn't been, in my, since I've been mayor, I'm not aware of any, you know, issues as far that would have, that would have gone to the level of we have a problem. But I saw it in the legislature, there are other communities, I'm sure you probably have counterparts across the state who, who have struggles every day trying to figure out that balance.
I was so thankful about our situation here.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you, Becky. Any other questions or comments? If not, ask for a motion to accept your report.
Moved by Tanya, second by Kayler.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
Thank you. Item three, consideration of a professional services agreement with Short, Elliott, Hendrickson Incorporated, S.E.H., for a sewer rate study in the amount of $25,000. Mike, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, and good evening. So the first item here that I'll be discussing with you tonight is a six-page agreement for, four-page agreement, two pages of general conditions for a sewer, what we call sewer rate study. Essentially, this is for the new wastewater treatment plant. This is a, essentially, a study, a paper study, a plan for how we will prepare to pay for the new wastewater treatment plant. Ultimately, of course, the ratepayers must pay that over a period of time, how long that period of time is. So this study allows the council to, once the report's written, to review some alternatives. We have two options that are stated on the second page. First two tasks are really data collection and preparation, looking at our current budget. And then task three is the user rate model. And so this is where, whether we get a conventional loan for municipal bond for 30 years, 20 years, period of time, do we go to a specialized program with the funding? In particular, it's been identified as probably the lowest cost to ratepayers. However, that's spread over a longer period of time. So it involves, even though at lower treasury rates, involves probably a higher amount of interest overall paid over a long period of time. So this is just like a home loan or an auto loan. If you have a 15-year home loan, it's a higher monthly payment. You have to be paying a lot less interest over that period of time. But it's difficult in the 15-year period of time than 30. So this study basically is going to give the council options for how we move forward and fund that project. And so the estimate is $25,000 for the completion of this study. We can add additional options at $1,500 per option. And of course, we would do that as, you know, once we embark on the study and we get partially through it, and we may want to add some alternatives. Some of this, some of the efforts that are going forth with additional grants that we might receive may affect this, and so mid-study. So with that, I would ask the council to approve the contract in the amount of $25,000 to Short, Elliott, Hendrickson for this sanitary sewer rate study.
All right, thanks, Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the council? If I maintain, oh wait, Greg?
I just also note that some of the funding programs we may look at, whether that's USDA, WFI, we talked about SRF funds, if we were to move up within some hierarchies and things like that, but that's one of the lower-tier ones. I just sent S.E.H. a new funding opportunity just to call on the other day. Some of these require that you have this completed. So not all of them, but some of them do. And so not knowing which direction we're going to go, we felt like this was also important to have this in hand and it to be relevant, updated, and to be standard. We went around and asked the different administrators of those programs what standard you needed for a study, so that when we did show up, they didn't ask us to do this step anyways. And so this will cover us throughout numerous options, but also give you the opportunity to see it based on a detailed analysis of our capital needs, because, I mean, they're going to go through and look at our wastewater main replacements and equipment replacement for trucks and our, you know, all the costs that go into the wastewater side of the city. So, but just wanted to remind you that this may be a requirement to even access funds for some of these.
Any other questions or comments from the council, or entertain a motion? Well, seconded. All right, we got motion and a second.
Moved by Worgen, second by Stryson.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayler, Tanya, Colterman, Stryson, Worgen.
All right, thank you. Item four, consideration of amendment two to a professional services agreement with the Schimmer Associates for the Workman Boulevard Extension Project in the amount of $36,721.79. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, thank you. So, several of you may recall at our last city council meeting, we approved amendment one to this agreement, the amount of $24,150. That was to add the topographic survey to the design of the Workman Boulevard Extension Rail Campus. We were going to hand that contract to a different firm, and due to availability, timeliness, that last amendment went to Schimmer Associates, the design engineer for that survey. This one is for two new tasks, and so the four-page agreement, then you have two additional attachments to the end of that. But it does go over two different tasks. Task A, the Alta and NSPS land title survey. So this essentially is for the unsold portions of the first edition to the rail campus addition. This, this is a title survey essentially for those parcels in hand, and it's required prior to the purchase of some of those parcels there. ALTA is American Land Title Association. So this is a standards survey. It does involve topographic survey of those additional lots, so essentially Outlet E over towards the granite property, subdivided as desired. A boundary survey with that, and one of the larger tasks is title commitment. So this is a title search essentially, and it goes back and kind of defines who specifically owns it easements and things like that. So it helps us plan out the final sale of all those lots. The second task, main task for this, is the subdivision replat. And so following this, we'll have to undertake a major replat of the first edition. And so the alignment of Workman Boulevard would be so the alignment of Workman Boulevard will be modified from the original plat of the first amendment to that, or first addition to the rail campus itself. And so with that, there's a total of 271 hours, 22 hours dedicated to project management, that's eight percent, so standard rule, somewhat under 10 percent, so that's appropriate, a little over 100 hours for the title survey and most of the work, 146 hours dedicated to the effort to replat. And so with that, the total is $36,721.79 for the second amendment. So with your approval, request this amendment to pass.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments from the council? Yes.
So this, with Schimmer also doing the Park Avenue work, right, and what other projects are they currently working on?
So Park Avenue in Bradford, they're essentially at this point doing construction inspection. And they're also doing the Isaac Walton project. They, as well, Park Avenue in Bradford and Isaac Walton, they have designed those projects. Isaac Walton is in the middle of construction, so I believe the last pour, concrete pour on that project is tomorrow and that should finish up by April 1st. Hopefully it'll finish up in a couple of weeks. We'll be able to open up the road in a couple of weeks. And then we have a water main project, which is ongoing on Sixth Street, the highway.
So this would be a different crew of engineers and surveyors for this project?
Yes, and currently they're not, it is a different crew, so a lot of this is work done by their surveying crew with these two amendments itself. So there's a little overlap with the engineering staff. Essentially, with these other four projects, the design engineering staff has kind of completed their work. And so right now, with the four current projects, we're working with their construction inspection staff and the work on the amendment one, the survey out the rail campus has already started a couple of weeks ago. And so this amendment two is also that survey crew, so.
Thanks. Matt, you good?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Mike, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Move by Streisand, second by Tanya.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
Thank you. Item five, consideration of supplement number one to the master services agreement approved December 6, 2022 with J E O Consulting Group Incorporated for preliminary engineering services related to the concrete bridge replacement project. Mike?
Thank you, thank you, once again. So 44 pages of legal documents here, which for me are a little difficult to read and understand myself, not being an attorney. L P A, as I've mentioned several times, that's the local public agency and that's the city of Seward, this case. And so this is what's required for federal funding of projects and of course, the bridge up past Concordia, where Old Crest turns into Both Road. That bridge has been selected by the state of Nebraska for replacement, 100 percent on federal funds. So we had completed with this firm, J E O, we had completed preliminary design through 30 percent design. And then we were awarded this project through the bipartisan infrastructure funding bill, you know, part of the federal government. And so that project, now $4 million, so it'll be 100 percent federally funded. I do not believe, so the figures on the top of page two, we have $54,103.35. That's what the city already invested in that 30 percent design. This supplement amount, which is the middle column at the top of page two, $228,733.66, that's what this agreement is for and the federal government will be funding this at 100 percent. So what we're approving here tonight, this resolution is required of the local public agency, the city of Seward, with the rights and responsibilities in that, in that project. It is a bridge that will be owned by the city of Seward, but it will be, none of this will be, expect the city to pay back or pay at all. I don't believe, I'd have to confirm, I don't believe any of the previously invested $54,000 we get credit for, we will get repaid, but that's a detail I guess we look into. So I did talk to the design engineer at J E O. They still anticipate this, construction of this bridge being in calendar year 2026, which is coming up, still almost two years away, but coming up rapidly. And we do expect another resolution for the NEPA study. And so with that federal funding, there's another design firm, their responsibility is the archaeological, the endangered species, the former airport that was out there. So it's the study on all the impacts that project may have on the neighboring land. And so expect another resolution when that firm submits it to us, I would think in the next few weeks.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the council? Or ask someone to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
After, all right, the resolution has been introduced and it's designated as resolution number 2024-6. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Worgen, second by Streisand.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
Item six, items related to chapter 213, animals, article one, dogs, item 18, impounding fees. Chief Peters, welcome.
Evening, everyone. For you is a memorandum of understanding between the city and Dr. Staba, Cross Creek Animal Center for basically sheltering and impoundment services when we have to impound a dog. We have a prior MOU that's about 10 years old and I think her desire is just to update some of the fees. There are also some cleanup that has to be done with the MOU to reflect our new ordinance numbers. The previous MOU was based on our prior code and numbering system. Biggest change is she wants to increase the fee for boarding to $150. And that's not on the city. That is, that would be on the pet owner. They have to come to us and pay the fee and then they take the receipt up to Dr. Staba to show that he's been paid and that also they are, have their rabies vaccinations and as well as city tags. She's also increasing her fees for putting an animal down up to $175. And I'll tell you, this is very rare that we get an invoice from her for the service. I think it's indicative of us being proactive when we do catch a dog running at large. We put it on our social media and by between that and word of mouth, the owner is typically found fairly quickly. In fact, sometimes we still have, we may not have even had a chance to take it up to staple first.
So if it gets there, no matter how long it's there, it's the $150 fee. Okay, that's what I was just understanding.
So the, my understanding is that the sheriff's office and the county have revised their MOU with Dr. Staba at the same fees as well. So with that, and like I said, going back to Dr. Staba and us rarely getting an invoice for her having to put a dog down, my understanding, she really does a good job of, if we do have a dog, it doesn't seem to have a home, she really goes out of her way to find an owner or a new owner for the pet, rarely. And if she does put an animal down, it sounds like it's usually sickness or some sort of injury that probably for the dogs, it's better to have them put down. So I would entertain any questions. Like I said, this is just an update from our last MOU of 10 years ago.
Any questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, item six A, this is the MOU, we just need a motion for that.
Move by Tanya, second by Kayla.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
And then item six B, this is consideration of a resolution to amend the fee related to impounding of dogs. Any questions or comments? Would anyone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced and it's designated as resolution number 2024-7. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Colton, and second by Worgen.
A motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
All right, thanks.
Right, thank you, everyone.
Item seven, consideration of an ordinance to create a clubhouse bartender position and to revise the library assistant to job title. Greg?
Yes, these were, we had two ordinances that we just couldn't take up at the last meeting. This is one, two. We plan to amend out essentially what we were using as the shorter cook to the bartender. This position will be a dedicated position that's more focused on looking at the restaurant now that we have Calabria coming on in March. And so we will handle all the alcohol and prepare it and then that will be taken out by the servers who are subcontractors. And so this is kind of their focus. They can still do the other stuff. They'll learn the POS system for doing clubhouse stuff, golf, but their primary focus will be there during busy restaurant hours, so they can focus on getting the needs of Calabria taken care of first and then they'll work with them on that. This was reviewed and recommended by kind of our golf team, which is Cody, Adam, Bob Core, Joel Brazey, taking a look at this along with Derek. And so the other one is just amending the actual title of the library assistant to position, removing social media and IT as extra elements of that, not any of the specifics of what the job does. Any other questions you have? Again, we're still on tap. They've been out there. I know Bob's crew had done a number of moving items and renovations, getting the billing cleaned up. And I know that the Calabria team has been out there over the weekend even, getting things ready, cleaning and starting to move some items and dishwashers and stuff like that. So, still on track.
Do you have anything about the libraries?
I just noted this just to change the money. That's all it is.
Any questions or comments from the council? Or ask someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right. An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska to create the clubhouse bartender position to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication and benefit form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title that designated as ordinance number 2024-4 and the title is hereby approved under a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So moved.
Move by Colton, and second by Kayla.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
That this is ordinance number 2024-4. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Worgen, second by Streisand.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? The question is, the ordinance number 2024-4 be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
All right, thank you. Item eight, consideration of an ordinance amending the municipal code, initiating an electric rate adjustment to the economic development rate affected with March 2024 billing. Greg?
Yes, this is an adjustment that was made pursuant to utility rates set by NPPD that we pay. And so as you know, the economic development rate, as we refer to it, that is, includes kind of a pass on. You'd find it in page six, five and six of the proposed ordinance. That's a, essentially a pass-through. You have to be in a written service agreement with NPPD to qualify for the rate. The element that we're changing of the rate is the portion that's the NPPD energy charge and updating city of Seward energy charge in totality, those two items. And so we have one person, one utility user on this rate and it's a, usually for a five-year period. This rate actually doesn't even exist within the NPPD structure anymore. So anybody that's on it now will be the last users of it. So, but we're making sure that that NPPD portion of it is passed on and moved through, then we'll give notice to our customer user. That is all.
Any questions or comments from the council? Or ask someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend sections 237-3.1 through 237-3.13 of the municipal code to initiate an electric rate adjustment that will increase total system revenues generated by rates charged to customers for services from the electric distribution system of the city by 3 percent effective with the October 23 billing, to provide for billing thereof, to repeal the original sections 237-3.1 through 237-3.13, to provide for publication of this ordinance in benefit form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. This is October, is that right? Because this is March.
It's March.
This is October.
Should be March 2024. That's what's in the ordinance.
So do you amend this title?
Yes.
All right. So the title I read was incorrect. It had October 23 as the effective date for this change. Actually, it is March. Kelly, do you need a motion to recognize this or does the title in this, does it matter if the? Yeah, so the title should say March instead of October. Can we reread it again?
No.
We're good?
Yeah. Then you can do a motion to amend the title if you want.
No. Is there a motion to amend the title?
I'll move, amend the title.
Motion to move, to amend it from October to March.
Move by Worgen, second by Streisand.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
All right. The ordinance has been read by amended title and it's designated as ordinance number 2024-5 and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Move by Tanya, second by Kayla.
Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
That this is ordinance number 2024-5. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Also moved, second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, the ordinance number 2024-5 be finally passed and adopted. Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
Thankfully, this is the last ordinance for this evening. Would anyone like to move to make all the ordinances a part of the permanent record?
So moved.
Second. Move by Colton, and second by, I'm going to go with Streisand.
Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Worgen.
All right, thank you. Next, we have item nine, consideration of a resolution to designate city items as surplus. Greg?
Yes, we have essentially two items, but a lot of items. Item number one is, I believe, 148 assorted street signs that have become very popular, the talk of Facebook and orders. We will remind people, don't call in, we're not going to hold them. Just come on down after today and stop in and see what we have. We can try, yeah, first come, first served. So we got a lot of calls. Poor Sarah had to field a lot of calls. So if you're interested, just come stop down or you can at least call in and see if we still have them, but we're not going to do special orders and things like that. The second item is a number of items over at the Civic Center that will be replaced as part of the Civic Center renovation.
Basically all the furniture.
Essentially. I know I know that members of the commission did walk through one more time with Aaron, I think, today, and just double-check. As it's noted in here and in our listings, there may be some items that we may have pulled back after relooking at some of the things, but for the most part, they're all listed there. There's essentially thirty-five lots of stuff, because we weren't going to sell every individual coffee cup, plate, whatever. We just organized them in ways that we thought were organized, gave them lot numbers, they're numbered over there if you want to go see what it is. You can stop by the Civic Center between now and, I think, March first, and take a look at that, and then, turn in your bid, and then, we'll dispose of what's left. All proceeds on those items will go back into refunds for the Civic Center, so. I can answer any questions you have, but that's what we've got going on.
Any questions or comments from the council? Or is it ask someone to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution hasn't been introduced, and it designated as resolution number twenty-twenty-four dash eight. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Tanya's, second by Streisand.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilkin, Taylor, Tanya, Colton, and Streisand, Wergen.
All right, item ten, up there in the Wellness Center. Joel, welcome.
Hello, everyone. We've been by the site recently, you've seen there's a lot more steel put together. With the good weather, they've continued to make a lot of progress on putting the steel walls and even parts of the roof together on the ground. By the end of the week, we expect a lot of those to start being put upright. The crane should be there, and they're going to be able to move pretty fast because they have put a lot of the building together already. And so, they continue to be way ahead on footings, moving to the last parts of the overall building, to part C and D, and just, it's, in another month, it's going to be pretty impressive, we believe, for what's going to be the walls, the steel that will be upright. So, that is exciting, continue to be on schedule and even ahead with the nice weather and some other pieces of machinery from some of the companies being able to come and help out, that they've been able to do a little bit more. So, we're hoping to start to be up there a little bit more, once they get the structure as far as our construction meetings go. So, that is the update on that. Do have one thing to update you with, Seward changing the game. At the board meeting last night, they have, they've started working with a marketing firm called Kid Glove. Just a little bit, the reason why that is, is because recently, there was a donate, a large donation where they were challenged to use that donation as a matching to fund the endowment. And so, they-